All right. Roll call.
Commissioner Caprosa.
Here.
Commissioner Livermore.
Here.
Commissioner Middleton.
Here.
Commissioner Rondo.
Here.
Commissioner Seaver.
Here.
Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a comment, nobody here? Everybody okay with the agenda?
We can all take that off again.
No, just good, but I said I better mention it. Um, this is a consensus, so everything's okay, agenda?
Yeah.
Um, bits. Um, unfortunately, we cannot put out the side by side, so that can be scratched. Let's start it off here, but um, we got the tracks and the trailer. Rick wants to go open those up? Unless you've got a bid on one? Or do you want to do it, Joel?
There's emails too, do you want to accept non-sealed, I posted submit sealed bids, but then received a lot of emails, so I guess I have to decide before if you're gonna accept non-sealed emailed bids.
It's up to you guys, that's, I'm, I bid it on them, so I shouldn't have a call on them. What was? Why, why do I make it difficult, dang it?
I, I know, as I said, that's, that's what I mean.
Have we ever accepted a bid that wasn't sealed?
No.
If you ask for sealed bids.
We asked for sealed bids.
I mean, that's always.
Unfortunate part.
I put it on the website, just that's typically the, but is there any, I don't know.
Is email sealed? I mean.
I don't, I don't know if it has even said sealed bids, I think I just did.
Cause that's how we usually do it.
Uh, let's look on the web, I think we should look at the website and see.
I believe it said sealed, it said sealed bid, so they should conceal bids.
If it's an email, it could be opened and then. Put out the information of another bid.
Maybe they were sent straight to me, they're dated and.
I know, but they could be open and then sent on.
Robbie doesn't know what's going on, so you can ask him and he can give us the best answer on this.
That, I got it.
We advertised for sealed bids.
Yeah.
And several people decided that the email was good enough. Do we take them or do we go seal bids? The people that followed the instructions and sent the sealed bids.
Oh, I see.
Some of them weren't gonna have time to mail it, you know, by the time they got it on Thursday.
Why don't we do sealed bids?
Have it.
Sounds cool, is that?
I think it's.
So we're not picking a favorite, but we know.
It's not supposed to be, so nobody knows what it is, there's.
Oh, yeah.
Seal, so nobody can see, nobody knows.
Oh, yeah, so does, has the board seen them yet?
No, none of them.
Just those clerk.
That we were just, before we.
Right, uh, I think we could maintain a level of uh, propriety by you just maintaining them.
That they are sealed, that they're sent to you.
They're sealed, they're sealed. If it was like an employee that was subject to the county commission, like if sealed bids went to Brian.
Right.
I think that would be more of a problem because you guys own that email, but Joel owns that email.
And it says to go to the clerk, right?
Yes.
So if they sent a mute.
It didn't say anything when Brian put that out, when people started calling, then he told, when, he just forwarded it to me, so there's probably gonna be a bunch of his calls coming, so at that point, it was, well, he, obviously, he was gonna have to send them to me now, cause oh, there were phone calls.
I see.
So I became the recipient of phone calls and emails all Thursday and Friday for this.
We advertised it to be sealed bids to give to the clerk's office?
Yeah, to be, yeah, yeah, to be.
Doesn't sound like that, but yeah, as long as the board, the board is making a decision, has not seen the bids.
So we can make a decision.
Yeah, I think so.
I have a problem, cause I bid on them, so I'll talk to those four.
Did you seal their bid?
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if my son sends a sealed bid.
Now we're down to three.
I really, I, like, I think that it's an inconvenience and maybe we can fix it, but we've never accepted bids that weren't sealed. And just apologize that things weren't more clear and will attempt to either, we either have to do it one way or the other. Moving forward, we can change anything, but.
I, one of the things in the board policy that we were gonna talk about also giving like a three day or five day or whatever amount of time to claim the property and then moving on to the next bidder, so we should probably specify and clarify our bidding procedure. But I guess it'd be a consensus.
I don't know, I'm kind of a liberal, right?
You say liberal?
Yeah, liberal, even. Uh, no bids, if they present a bid, well, I don't know what difference.
I think it's beneficial to the county to take the highest bid we can, if it's legal. But you guys.
That's, this hand I say, you know, I want the county to take the best bid we can get, and this hand I'm like, oh, but the instructions said to do this.
And but what's our policy say, and we don't really?
You don't, that's why, I made a note here, we need to fix that.
So we accept all, because we don't even have a policy on it.
But what about the people that said, well, I couldn't make it, I wish I would've knew and I could've uh, just emailed it? Are we gonna get, are we gonna get a backlash on that?
Well, not if they've already sent their sealed bid in, cause it fulfilled the bidding process.
No, I mean, people that didn't.
People that did.
Cause they didn't have time, so I didn't.
Didn't know about it till the last minute.
Yeah, I know Vern.
All I know is the guy that had emailed me months ago about it, the day after, the day, the day they went up. I emailed him and said, hey, there's only one now and it's up.
Vern or Seymour messaged me and asked me, well, how do I bid on it, so I'm out of town right now. The other eagles, that's what they have to be. I didn't, I didn't know he couldn't just email a bid in.
I, I'm with Kelly, I think it's only, and I only say it because that's how we advertised it, but I think we need to adjust in the future. A penalty for this, for, for excessive equipment or whatever, especially that. I think we could loosen up our bidding procedure on. See, I don't know, my son sent it.
Right, so you're just.
So do I have a voice in this or not?
We don't know how you.
I would, I would say that the highest bidder, I don't give a damn, how you do it. But I don't know.
I can go either way, so I'm, I'm waiting for somebody else to weigh in there, cause. And my bids are low anyway, I just put one in. I think we should, I just don't wanna run into a problem and if somebody calls, I wish I would've known, I could've just emailed.
Right.
That's all I'd wanna say, and then, but I think we should go for the highest, especially in the, if not, if not now, but at least in the future, change our bid.
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah.
Then to be able to do that, we can get more bids and more money for our stuff.
That's fine, yeah.
What's the uh, what's, what are we bidding?
One trailer.
We're selling something?
Yes, that's a tracks.
Oh, I think I, I changed my mind on what I said, I, I think Kelly, Kelly said. I thought you was bidding on work to.
No, well, we're selling.
Oh, so the bid actually matters then, because people undercut each other, yeah, and we sealed bid, we advertised sealed bids, somebody emailed a bid in.
Like I said, even if we didn't know it, he could open it and hit it as marked red and nobody would know if it was actually red or not.
I was gonna say, yeah, I was, you guys kept talking about highest bidder, highest bidder, I was like, why the hell are you trying to get the highest bidder?
We open sealed bids only.
I agree, I agree with Commissioner Livermore.
Okay.
Yeah, that's different.
And I think we can modify our policy moving forward, especially for this kind of sale.
They can come by email, we'll talk about that. So just not one for.
Oh, that means I gotta pay. I didn't tell Rita.
Cargo trailer, one thousand seven fifty.
Well, you over, you overheard any of them.
Okay, so.
That's all that place.
Who'd they sell for, is that what they sell for? Um, you, you can find them roughly that.
That one new was probably four thousand bucks, thirty-five hundred, the nice trailer.
Needs two things, oh, they're not tires.
Need tires.
Saddled.
Yeah, they've, they've gotten expensive, they're holding their value for this, I don't know why.
I, I have one, but it ain't at home, it's at the son's house.
Need a motion on that, Joel?
Yes. Most, you gotta emotionally accept the bid.
Yep, I'm able to accept the single sealed bid on the cargo trailer.
I'll second that. No favor, I opposed. Uh, are you?
Are you not voting though? All in favor, you wanna do a roll call for that, just so we.
Okay, yeah, there we go, thank you, Joel. I didn't vote on it, but he knew roll call, minus me. Well, I'm just the same, okay, yeah.
Commissioner Caprosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yes.
Commissioner Middleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
I'm saying. Number seven, Flares Trax.
Can you open that one?
I've got a couple there.
Merry Christmas. I mean, we don't have it in full for you, so.
Uh, you've got worse things than that, I'm sure.
This is much better. Slaloon bid, twenty thirteen Ranger Trax, two thousand. This one's for, this one's for one thousand one hundred and five. This is uh, John Rondo.
Okay, there you go.
See, I didn't know if he sealed it or. You could've told me, Joel. He was trying to stay neutral. We could accept the bid on the two thousand thirteen Flares Trax from John Rondo and they wanted two thousand dollars.
That's more. I'll support. Roll call.
Uh, who is starting?
Geez, that don't sound good, does it? He was the highest.
Yeah.
Commissioner Middleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes, there we go. Were any of the other ones higher? Just.
Yeah, I said the trailer one was lower, actually.
Yeah, that was the highest.
Thousand fifty and eight hundred.
Yeah, so that was the highest. Yeah, we did the right thing. The only thing, if we would've accepted those, there might've been somebody else that would've put one in, they would've known it.
But we can't. Maybe I was mistaken, there was one that put in for all three, but I just needed to bring it up there for the disappointment.
And one below price or everything? So he didn't specify, well, see, that's. Wish he wants to pay the whole amount for it too. I'll give that to Ted Open, give my money. I'm sure John wouldn't want to give it to Ted. Okay, number eight, discuss being a hold on selling players Ranger on bids and that's, um, we actually phoned a home for that, we got a whole uh, Rock River, and they would greatly appreciate having that. With out tracks, they didn't want the tracks, so that's why we.
I'll get that out there next week sometime.
Cool. So they can use it.
Good, they can use it, that's a good place for it then.
Um, discuss transfer utilities to animal shelter until exit date. You know. See, we got any?
I think it's time, and I think I've been the one, I've been the one trying to talk everybody into not doing it, so. And just, we're not shutting them off, but they just, any tenant, they need to pay the home utilities.
Yeah.
With the exception, of course, of the ones we already have, the snow and the garbage, which we have contracted, so what, maybe we'll continue those contracts, cause we signed them.
And by looking at Facebook, Snow's getting, they're explaining themselves sometimes, isn't it?
Yeah, I saw that too.
Whatever.
Yeah, that's all it was, I was like.
Make it the last one, eh?
You know, I, I'm not even gonna guess what the old is gonna be at this point. Um, if I, if I had to make a guess, I'm gonna say May or June.
Are we gonna do thirty day notice?
I don't know what we have, I was, I don't know what we have to give as far as, I mean, I guess a phone call on their part, it's not like it.
It doesn't matter what we give.
I think the first of the month, I mean.
First of the month, you can give them three weeks.
Unless there's an opinion that that's not enough time.
I think that.
If we tell them they need to switch the utilities over on the first of January, that's a reasonable amount of time, correct?
What does the existing lease say? Does it say that we will cover utilities?
There is no existing lease.
Well, it just says.
Theoretically, the old lease.
The old lease, the utilities were included, that was part of our.
Right.
Our deal for them to hose our animals.
Yeah, tricky situation, because technically, isn't the court carrying over the lea, the old lease month to month while the litigation is pending?
I honestly, but I honestly don't know that answer, I don't know where that's ended.
Yeah.
Because the board voted two years ago, over two years ago, to not renew the lease again.
Right.
Yeah, it was supposed to be month to month for one year.
Then a letter was given to them by somebody else.
Yeah.
Authorizing a month to month lease.
Oh, okay.
And that's when we said we could change it, that month to month lease, we could change it and decide not, they said that it stipulated for one year, we had to continue with the contract, and then after that, we could change things.
And that was over a year ago.
And that was over a year ago.
I mentioned it, Zappa didn't tell me we shouldn't do it, but maybe we need to reach out and ask him specifically?
That's my recommendation.
I just knew.
I think we should make.
We should uh, reach out to our attorney and get an opinion to make sure we're not.
Okay, then we agree that we would like to move forward with that.
Right, can always put out the agenda for next week.
Yeah, I, I will reach out to him.
Yeah.
I want him to make Joel do it, because he was supposed to update me anyhow and ask.
Yeah, um, I would actually go as far as uh, even make the authority to.
That's what I said, but also he is, will be back here in a week and he'll know for sure, we can vote that.
Yeah, it'll be, that's only two weeks notice, it's a three. If he says it's okay, I can't imagine that making a big difference, because it's a phone call.
And today is the nine?
Ninth.
I mean, in.
Eleventh.
In nine days, we're back in court anyway, so.
Yeah.
Well, we'll have it on the record that we want.
I will get ahold of our attorney and find out what.
Or do we wanna hold up and have the attorney bring it up at the court date?
I would at least like to have his opinion beforehand.
Okay.
If he's at the court date.
I don't know what's gonna be allowed at the court date, honestly, so I'd rather.
Not take the chance.
I'll ask him, I'll call, I'll get ahold of him, specifically ask that question.
Okay, so that one's done. Number ten, discuss any other questions on that? Everybody good, good. Transfer utilities, okay, now discuss reauthorized, oh, same thing. No, well.
The outdated, the outdated one.
Why do we gotta reauthorize?
Because we only, it was a pretty specific timeframe that we talked about.
Okay.
So I don't wanna continue. We had like a.
Thirty day.
We'd like about a thirty day window there, we talked about, so, anything, anything now that they give us is outside of that, that we talked about, so I don't wanna. I don't wanna be making decisions for everybody. Without everybody's consent to make the decision.
I feel fully confident, you're gonna make, to make the best decision for the county, and if we gotta go back back forth to board meetings, just, just gonna prolong anything that's gonna happen.
Then always trying to give it up and see if somebody else wants it.
No, no, I don't mind doing it, I just, I just don't want to overstep when I was authorized to do so.
Well, I feel, that's my personal thing.
Yeah, you're great. You can keep handling.
Anybody else got any questions on that or comments or ideas?
We can get an earlier date, take it then. No, hopefully, you know.
For whatever Mike can fight for and get.
Don't smash the cookie jar. Don't plan on it.
Um, we get a motion on that one?
This is before the hearing.
Okay, yeah, consensus?
Consensus.
We can put it on for next week. This one we do need action, full-time court recorder, deputy probate registered judicial officer assistant, blah, 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 blah. Position will be revised, okay? Long western duties. We had a part-time leave us, unfortunately, and uh, we had it in the budget where we can fill that with full-time and hopefully get somebody that we can keep. I think we already put it out there, it was done, it's already, for the union, right?
The union is.
How many more days is that left?
It's done.
Done?
Yeah, and still hanging on the wall.
Nobody went for it?
No.
Okay, so we can put it out there to public now?
It's not, once we find out if it's gonna be full-time, uh, so we're waiting for today. Right, that's why I want the action tonight.
We'd like to get a motion on that, one way or the other, and get that through today, so he can either post it full-time or part-time.
I'll make that motion, go, go ahead.
I'll make the motion for us to post the job for the full-time court recorder, blah, 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 and all.
No favor? Ah, so I. Send it.
I assume you've been working on a better job description, not just. The mini modified page.
Yeah, we like handle it.
Good, okay.
Um, number twelve, cute bad dudes, nine thousand dollars, thanks, everybody. Questions on that?
Consensus?
Consensus? Good, yeah, thirteen, county court fee schedule, Joel put it in there, just gonna raise a couple things. Give us more in line with everybody else. Somebody wants to get married to be a house, they're gonna be a lot, I should get married to be a. Consensus?
Census.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm just trying to get back to my. Fourteen, action, friend of the court. Funding settlement agreement, Eldra County, we got it down to seventeen percent Eldra County. And this will go, once a year, uh, we'll meet after the friends of the court sometime mid-January, and he'll have all the numbers, we'll plug it in to the matrix that we discussed, and that'll give us what we're going to pay that.
Yeah, I like the fact that we've got it agreed upon.
Yep.
Follow the matrix, a formula, an algorithm, whatever you want.
A little shock over here.
Fine, you think I can pull that out?
Didn't seem like it was gonna.
Everybody agreed, so.
Uh, one was reluctantly agreed, but once you had actually put time and numbers to everything, it's hard not to.
It's not hard, it's hard to, yeah.
Well, dude, that hold our ground, and we did, so.
That would be the action item on.
I'll make the motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, friend of the court funding memorandum and settlement agreement.
That'll second that. No favor?
I, I got a question there.
Yep.
Why, why is it twenty twenty-five, why shouldn't?
Oh, okay, okay, I'm, yeah, okay.
I get you.
So if the amount of cases that the referee faces goes down, our percentage goes down?
Yeah. There's a multi thing on there, it goes by, um.
Yeah, but it's like three different.
Yes.
This, this percentage gets split this way, this percentage gets split this way.
But it's more fair of time used.
Right. Scientific, rather than just shoot.
And that parallelize on that, you did eye that, eh? Yes. Okay, we're fifteen, this is for ambulance to purchase a two thousand twenty-two Ramlin ton mega cab, used fourteen thousand miles. Come out of ambulance fund. Question on that?
I thought that was supposed to come out of Stone Yard.
No, it comes out of Stone Yard, it comes out of ambulance fund.
And then gets reimbursed?
Gets reimbursed later.
Comes from the title, title three.
Oh, title three, okay. It can reimburse.
Can't use it directly.
Okay. I think I did.
So he explained it to me, so.
I think I'm right on what I was right. Maybe the action on that one? We have a motion.
I'll move to purchase the twenty twenty-two Dodge Ram one ton mega cab.
I'll support that. No favor? I oppose, none passes. Number sixteen, twenty twenty-five upcap, board nominated nations, we have.
You know, we talked to one committee, I'm still willing to do upcap, and we assumed Mick was still willing to do fair block, so.
Yeah, I'm. Okay, I enjoy it.
I think we just continue with, yeah, I've been enjoying upcap, so. Willing to go again.
Okay, so we only need one for upcap?
Yep.
Yeah.
And Mike's final that, eh?
Yes, sir.
Consensus?
Consensus.
And number seventeen, board?
The board?
Fair board, and that would be Mickey.
Yep.
Consensus?
Consensus.
Yes. Eighteen, Eldra County, DHHS, three year appointment. And we have Denise. The only ones. We only need one?
Only one.
Reappoint, any questions on that? You have a consensus?
We should, we should, we should put it in there that the, uh, box is open on Friday, isn't it?
No, that's DHHS.
Oh, okay.
Okay, consensus on that one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And number nineteen, personal policy. Personal policy, okay, Joel? That's not in my thing here.
No, that's huge. It'll take you to it and it'll be there forever. I found a website, I made an archive, so anytime these big things like this, if there's a blue link on it, you can go directly to the website, it'll be stashed in the, it's on the dashboard, under meeting minutes, archived documents, yeah, so.
Well, committee, it was just the changes we had talked about. Most of the changes were just to like the table of contents to readjust, uh, we took out repetitive language. It was like, one paragraph that was in there like four times that really didn't need to be there. The whole, we talked about the return to work. No fever for, both had to be true, no fever, and symptoms have improved over twenty-four hours.
Those three policies are already.
Yeah.
There's just adding to, to the policy.
And the travel policy and meals, we went to that, the federal.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can front load meals instead of having to.
On Brian's, consent, any questions on that?
Yeah, like I said, you can click on that link and it'll show you all the changes too, so if you, if you wanna see, it'll highlight them, you can see it's red.
It's red?
The link is blue, but then it takes away documents that red lines.
Okay, remember, I'm colorblind.
Okay, remember I'm colorblind.
If it has a strike through. Yeah, it'll have a line through.
Yes, okay, number twenty. Our organizational meeting potentially set Friday, January third at ten AM, that okay with everybody?
Should be fine for me. Good for me.
Yeah.
Consensus?
Yep.
Get me away from the kids. And we have vacations, so.
Twenty one, cost saving and revenue sources, do you have any? None, that switches over to twenty two unfinished business, we have any unfinished business, Joel? Financial matters appropriations, board bills, financial reports and all funds. Any questions on any of those three?
Nope, we've approved the board goals of the audit.
The Eric? Consensus on that?
Yes.
Any resolutions? Meeting reports, Rick, can?
Um, I have a. With pathways, uh, they have a little issue with parking down the street.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and um. I sent an email to Sandy over in Newbury with this, I'm waiting to find out. Which side of the street they're uh. Not being able to get plowed.
Oh, the city, you're talking the cities.
So, um.
The issue?
Uh, because of the normal blazing out and then people coming in. Reason I'm not parking, so they have to park out on the street. And she had a complaint, but I also had another complaint from a lady from Georgia. The male mistress, during the storm and M seventy seven wasn't plowed.
They couldn't get it.
It was plowed, but you know, it's during a storm, so.
I think because of there in the winter. The way that their parking lot is, you come really close to the curb, there isn't much of a sidewalk at all. So when the city plows, it makes a huge embankment, which. Makes their parking lot smaller.
I used to pull it out. Contract with them and. It's, they have cars of their own, the.
That sit there.
That sit there. Yeah, and they don't wanna move them for, sometimes for days, they need to figure out, I think. They should really think about letting their personnel take the vehicle home in the winter time.
Yeah.
That would cure a lot of it.
Those right there, every time I come over.
And it makes it hard, that's taking up four spaces.
And it makes it harder.
Yeah, it's hard because there's not a lot of room.
No, and it's an angle, it's a goofy angle and it's, it's a big weird. So you might wanna see if they wanna let their personnel take their vehicle home in the winter time.
I don't know, there's much difference that city's gonna do because.
No, city.
They're gonna plow the, you know, it's like when I go home and I got two feet in the end of my, my bath, you know, like. They could be a little more gentle, but.
I don't hurt, but I'll suggest that to her, yeah. Anything on your twenties, Mike?
Uh, no, I think we pretty much talked the. Animal shelter was the biggest thing out of ours, so.
Me and me, we had health department today, um. We're gonna have minus two, we've got one from Mackinac and one from Lewis County that will longer be there. Um, they didn't have an update on the. Uh, environmental code, but we wanna do a statewide code for subject water net and if it looks like that. For the good is gonna be squashed.
Yeah.
So, we don't need that, we don't need state telling us all we said on our.
That was the word I got back last month at that meeting, I went to mess it up with two pieces. Every legislature on both sides, I think everyone of them that was there said the same thing that.
Yeah.
That's not going anywhere, you just can't get.
They don't have the same weather as we do up here.
Yeah, and they do have, they said two, they were talking about lame duck, it's gonna be very minimal, that's because. You need twenty in the house to pass anything, the ones that nineteen, ones that eighteen, the ones nineteen. Are a lot of the Democrats that are not going back in, so they ain't even going to the meetings, so they're done. So it's just a, they're in a stalemate.
An extra lame lame duck.
Yeah, which is good, there's nothing anything thrown.
Always gonna try and jam something silly through to.
I would say if you, if you think it was right, you should have did it before, not wait till his four year old. That's the only meeting I had.
No, that's mine.
And you have anything?
Uh, no, coupon we canceled.
I went to the road commission today thinking we went to uh. Yeah, I'll answer, you know, it's always after.
In routine, yeah.
Yeah, I forgot, I did, I did go last Monday.
Talking about that.
Yeah, the snowmobile trail was a fairly hot topic. Everybody was pretty level headed for the most part.
That's what they said.
And spoke, respectfully at least, you know, we've got a little heated a couple of times, but not, not too bad. Yes, they are not gonna, the trail is not marked, they've already taken the markings down, the trail will not be groomed. But the road commission is not closing H fifty eight to snowmobile traffic. So could by state law, you can operate on a county road, so they're not even trying, so. Just like you always could, you could still run your snowmobile on the shoulder on the right away of H fifty eight, so.
They just wanna be allowed to have the groom.
There will be no, there will have to be a, there will not be a groomed or marked trail.
You can take bump trail, but what's gonna happen is trail miners and trail car me road are gonna get swamped with snowmobilers. But any town road too is gonna get hit. And any town road. By Peter Erneshos. Oh, yeah.
You know, um, engineer did explain, cause I know somebody asked where they came up with the two hundred thousand dollar number, this uh. The specialty mix of blacktop that they're talking about, they had used it back in two thousand seventeen on the Iron Ore Heritage Trail. This exact mix apparently. So he took that and multiplied, added like three percent per year for increase. It came out to like a hundred and ninety thousand, so he just rounded up to two hundred, so that's where the two hundred thousand dollars.
Eight cents on mine, plus two hundred thousand dollars.
He said it came out right around a hundred and ninety, so he just rounded up to two hundred. And that's, I'm just repeating what was said, you know.
Yeah, but I don't ever.
I'm just providing information, not opinion.
Yeah.
We have for the specialty hardened mix.
Yeah.
And you know, obviously said no, so. Representatives Burtman had a, somebody from his office was there, so. And that's one of the times it got a little bit heated.
Any correspondence still? Or comments, Rick? Mike?
Dog, I've got upcap coming up, I might have to do it virtually, cause I'm the only one working on Friday, but. I did talk to Chris Lindquist the other day just to check in and see how the meal program is going, he said right now it's going quite well. Asked you, there's another program, I guess, that's gonna let him reach out like even out to the far end of like limestone township and stuff too, to try and get some more meals out there. Sounds like they're getting meals to Grammerie at least once a week, because they've got an aide that has to go see four clients anyhow. So they take meals over when they go, so we're looking to try and do a little more there still. Try and make a little more available, so I gave her a couple more ideas of. Some folks and some organizations that may be able to pitch in and help get some more meals over there too, so. But she said all in all, it's been real successful and. They're really grateful about it, people are liking the food better, they're getting more, more hot meals, less frozen meals and. They've got more choice in what they get too, so.
I do know today at our meeting, the health department, we were uh commended online. In hopes here for in Eldra County auto market. That's all, maybe anything?
Yeah, um, when we were at that meeting, there's a lady called in, there's a, there was a two year study of five hundred pages. By the government select committee on COVID pandemic, final report, and that's online if you wanna look at it. I've got one, two, three, four, five, six things I remember that were really. They didn't have to do, it was really done wrong, so, but I got that page here if somebody wants it, it's. If you, anybody's interested, I have it there.
Y'all, you having?
Nope, well, I guess I'm going to the central upper fish peninsula materials management. I'm signing commission, this, the sixteenth next week.
You take a position up there?
Oh, no, it's Wednesday, huh?
And they're gonna pick positions for you?
Uh, we did that last time.
Would you take?
I did not take anything.
Just a member.
That chair was really, really talking to me too, it was, it was hard to say no to that one. Cause nobody was even opening their eyes, they were like. They were hiding, so this will be our first. That was our first, but I think this one's gonna take my.
Actual meeting, yeah.
With that, I went on Mac and they said they're not sure of the funding for that yet.
Yeah, nothing's true, nothing for sure yet.
So, that's where that is.
Oh, I forgot, yeah, I go to school tomorrow too, so.
Oh, like commissary school?
Yeah.
You, it's, that's a good.
All days.
When I went, I went to the landmark.
Oh, boy, up there.
That's where the U P one was this time, so.
Joel, you got any comments?
Uh, just going back, I might have missed it, did we have consensus on the financial reports?
Yes.
Yeah.
All, I went through all of them.
Maybe the A B C version.
Yeah, my own comment is. I, I know I mentioned it in private before, but the cost savings and revenue sources, we always tend to. Skip it like we don't have any, anything going on, but I did wanna make the point that I think every day. That everybody makes, is working on grants, is trying to nickel and dime in every way it's possible. And it comes across sometimes on these agendas, like we just skip that one, like it's just frivolous, but.
Behind the scenes.
Use the budget as much as possible, and just case in point, again, going to in person. To lose and arguing your, your case and saving several percent is, is huge, and it just, it happens regularly. I just wanna point out that that is not something that I see taken lightly behind the scenes, so in. In this meeting, we skip it quite, quite a bit and um, it's not like it's not happening.
I'm sure. Uh, don't leave everything, or anything, everything is going good next door, I wanna thank the board for uh. Um, putting, was it three thousand seven hundred and fifty back in the rescue and. For the equipment.
My question was, where's the revenue gonna go for the tracks and the trailer?
Trying to get that horse in front of the cart right away, eh? So, yes, I mean, is, is that money going back in the general fund or? Where'd it come out?
Well, you know.
Don't say it, I don't even wanna, no. Any comments, Ben?
I would think that it either came out of Joe, I would think this how it came out of either Stone Garden or.
I didn't wanna hear that.
I don't think they came out of Stone Garden.
Okay, what do you think, rescue?
Emergency management. I'm just kidding.
We don't really know where.
I just weren't kidding. That was a long time, well, before us, I don't know where it came from, but.
You know, I guess I'm not sure on the trailer, that may have been out of Stone Garden, I don't know, but the, the tracks, I don't think were. That was something that was added. It's just like when we rebuilt the motor in that one that were uh given over to Rock River. You know, that was.
Do we have our pocket, yeah.
Yeah, that came out of all these funding, I don't know if it was sheriff, uh, maintenance or vehicle maintenance or what. Fun, but you know, we paid for that as a colleague, so.
And now in title three, it does say repairs too, didn't it? We can get money for repairs.
It does.
Just a thought, in future, we get a.
Sure, absolutely.
Building, you know, we're all doing something, fire or EMS or search and rescue, it's up, one of our apparatus is break down. We can repair it, but we can get reimbursed with that title three money after we repair it.
We only have till January of twenty twenty five, I think, don't we? Going forward.
Yeah, we gotta do it for this year, right, like stuff that we bought in twenty twenty four, it's gonna get reimbursed for.
That's, I read it.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I'm glad that we're doing a vehicle tomorrow. Then we can include that in our.
Right, I think we're gonna try to get everything here in the next week or so, that'll be here tomorrow at noon. Okay, purchased the next week or so, so then after our forty five day public comment. Then we can, we still have that short period to reimburse us and fill a payboard. Correct, is that sound, am I on the right track?
I, I do have a question, on that, um, Polaris Ranger. If you can't sell it. How can you give it away?
We're not giving it.
No, it's part of our.
Or you're just. I see, I, I just wonder.
Kind of the same thing we did Mick with that six wheeler, that went to Rock River too. That was purchased on a grant as equipment, we had no longer to use for Rock River did, so that went over there. Same thing with uh this Ranger, same thing with uh, you know, our, our track vehicle for execution that we utilized last year. That went over to Burt Township, they're all sad, you know, so.
Seems like the first responder rig.
I didn't, you know what, Mick, I don't know, because I thought we could sell this Ranger until I learned that Schoolcraft County's been dealing with the, with the same thing for a year. Uh, they can't get rid of it because it was through FEMA and they won't sign a letter of release, so. If, if we were to have to keep it, it, it would collect the dust, I don't, I, I don't know. So, you know, that's why we called Jim today, you know, they wanna, they'll, they'll utilize it.
It's, it's a good thing, but I just wonder.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're not giving it away?
No. I didn't, somebody could ask you what you was doing. Pam, anything?
Um, I'm just gonna go back to the same question he asked, so when I get money in the office for the tracks and the trailer, where, where? Where? I could work with Joel on it.
Yeah.
We'll look up, see where it was.
See if you can find where it came from, cause that's, that's what we've done in the past, if we can find where it came from.
Right. Exactly, we'll work on that.
We can't, it just goes in, um, um. General fund? No, what fund did we put in?
No, no. Entitlement retention, what, what was it?
No, another one, training fund.
Okay, I'm over guessing now, yes.
We don't have a training.
That was my best guess.
Oh, well, okay. Something in a training recognition fund.
It, it, it's a training line item, you know, commissioners.
Okay, alright.
Couple of meetings ago, you discussed this. If it's gonna go somewhere other than general.
Maybe we should find out, I think we should just wait until if they find out where it comes from. Put it back into that, if they can't, then it's gonna have to go in general.
Or we can make a decision on that next week, giving a chance to find where it came from. Like the airport truck, we knew that came from general fund money, so we put it back.
I just think for future, if we wanna put that in our policy, that money's. Work it seems goes back into where it came from, if we cannot find where it came from, it goes in the general, then there's no other discussion in the future about it.
That's kind of how the law written.
Is it?
Yeah.
Then you don't have to have any discussion.
Right.
Robbie? How much budget's done, that one very easy, thank you for that. Been with lame duck stuff in our office too, I've been in Lansing since last month and on Zoom. And to find out some of the partisan and bipartisan stuff that they're cooking up from lame duck. And then uh, we're in the middle of a two day kind of marathon, five evidentiary hearings in two days, so. So far, we're two for two. I'll let you know next week how we finish up, hopefully we're five, five.
Finish strong.
I think we'll do good, my guys are tired, uh, but um, the holidays coming and it's gonna be welcome.
Any brief public comments, thank you, public, enjoy.